Remember.
Yeah, that is. I wonder where everyone is. Okay. All right. Welcome to our Monday, January 4th caucus of and work session of the common council prior to our full meeting at seven. JR, will you? Well, I can call out who's here now. For the record, right now, we have Council President Ellis, Councilmember Robinson, Conti, Flynn, O'Brien, Councilmember Fahy, Johnson, Love, Igo, and Hoey. We've got everyone that's here, right? Our staff, our attorney, JR Pichardo, Lieutenant of eight, Michelle Andre, and our clerk, Danielle Gillespie. So just everyone that's here right now. Going into the, we're also joined by Councilmember Fredericks. Just going off the, the agenda. First up, we'll have a public hearing. An ordinance forty-four, one twenty-two, twenty. That's for decommissioning and closing Scott Street. That's forty-four, one twenty-two, twenty, to start the meeting. After that, we have approval meeting minutes from previous meeting. We'll have the December twenty-first to twenty-twenty meeting minutes for approval of the offering. Okay. Kelly, do we have any speakers for the public hearing? I didn't see any in my email. Do we? I didn't.
No, we don't have any speakers for the public hearing.
Okay. Where are we down to? We did the minutes, December twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Next consideration, local laws. We don't have any. And Mr. Anani's not here, but we were trying to work around an issue with local law G. We did. It's, it's in committee and it'll have to be taken up there.
Local law I, I believe, wasn't it? As amended?
Right. No, I was, no, I'm just mentioning local law G because that was a conversation from our last meeting.
Yes.
So I don't want anyone to think I just skipped in a Mr. Anani's not here, but we talked about it. It went to committee, didn't get addressed to committee, so it's still in committee. It has to be dealt with before it can and be considered for, for discharge or moving out of committee. Okay, so that's that. Next, local law I. It's like number three under local laws in our agenda. By Mr. Johnson, that was taken up at our public safety meeting a couple of weeks ago, passed with positive recommendations, but wasn't taken up at our last meeting because it had to age. So that will be a pass for local law I. Okay. Next on to ordinances introduced by Mr. Conti regarding the parking amendments to the parking zone boundaries for the parking system. That'll be a referral to planning.
Were you? I thought you might not.
Oh, no. You know what? We did. Remember, the last meeting was a little bit crazy. So, right, I think we agreed that we were just doing the aging and then it was gonna, we were gonna move forward with it. So that, that's my recollection of it. Is that what you're? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and a reminder, this just takes the exact boundaries that the council already adopted by resolution in twenty-twelve and puts them in city code so that they'll be in code and not get lost. And then we can work on issues as far as expansion or changes, which is, you know, wrapped up in that home rule bill that we hope to get passed this year. But this does, this is no change in boundaries. It's the exact same boundaries. It just puts them in city code.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conti. We'll, we'll be in a truck. Okay, next, under we're on to resolutions introduced. Again, Mr. Anani's not here. We've since been elected, for the record, Councilmember Ballerin is, has been added, Councilmember Doche, along with Court Counsel Brett Williams is also joined us in the meeting. So for for I can't read that tiny writing. So under
two, one.
Right, yeah, yeah. No, there was something that popped up on the screen in the chat. Now, other resolutions under it's Mr. Ninety's one eleven twenty-one R. Mr. Ninety's resolution for the the commission to study the changes to the flag. And originally, I was referring it to council operations. Can one of you put up the amended version of Mr. Ninety's? Resolution.
Amended version or is it the original version since it hasn't?
It's not. It's an updated version.
Revised.
Revised, yes.
Right.
It's a revised version.
Because with his changes, I'm inclined to just to see if.
Was this sent to us?
Were the changes?
It was.
Yes.
When was it sent to us?
Oh, today.
Day, I mean, it's, it was.
Ten minutes ago, we just got. Yeah, about ten minutes ago, we got the changes. It was a late arrival.
So basically, the changes are, it changes it from asking the mayor to put a commission together or asking councilmembers basically saying having a starting a conversation about the flag and not, not putting the onus on any commission or anyone to, to start something.
Is this the updated one?
Yes, 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 it is.
The title should be changed on that, I think.
Right, authorized.
Yes, to commission the study, yes, it shouldn't say.
Yeah, it should. My mistake, sorry.
No problem. Courage to create a new flag.
Would you like me to leave it up so that members who have been seeing the email have the opportunity to review it, or do you want me to bring it back down?
Yeah, no, just leave it up just for another minute or so. It's not, not much there, so people, folks can read it.
So, so are we gonna set any kind of system for this conversation?
If, I think all that might can be discussed in, in the committee, how people want to proceed and things of that nature.
Okay. What committee is the comment?
Yeah, no committee.
On council.
Right, yeah. But, but here, if you, again, if you look, he's, he's asking and saying that we encourage a community conversation for a new flag, which incorporates basic principles and designs. I mean, that's, I mean, I, as it's changed, I mean, it's not, it's certainly different from the original version, which I, I would support. I'm, I'm not sure about other folks.
Is, is the flag set in the charter, like the seal is?
No.
And I think the point is, is the resolution's just asking and calling for encouraging a community conversation for the flag, so it's not.
It, it, which is a conversation that we are already beginning to have, and it just, again, it encourages that conversation to take place and occur. And I suspect it will.
Yes.
Right, so.
Absolutely.
We don't have to get into the weeds of how that conversation.
Right.
Might take place tonight because it's gonna be a process that's not just with all the council, but the mayor, community groups. It's, you know, it's a
Yep.
A larger.
Okay.
Universe.
The larger universe.
Okay, well, you can take it down, Danielle. We'll, we'll go to council operations.
I mean.
Or do you want to pass and, and just have those discussions? This is all stuff that we should have done before, you know, the original piece of legislation got introduced, but so we'll just go to council operations.
I have a problem.
Okay.
Hey, Richard, what did you say?
Oh, where are you?
I'm here, I'm here. I just.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't notice.
He said he didn't have a problem.
Okay.
Bud, are you gonna take the word commission out of the title?
Yes, I'll take the commission out of the title. Okay. You know, this is a new year and I want to be able to compromise with my council colleagues. So if any suggestions, recommendations, procedures, technicalities that any council member want with this resolution, I am open to it. So, yeah, and Happy New Year.
It could be a Happy New Year if you stick to the resolution.
Yes. You're not running a fever, are you?
That you already started, so you might as well continue it.
Yeah, okay, so that'll be going to council operations. Okay, next, resolutions to eleven twenty-one R. by Ms. Love. Resolution calling on your state legislation and that legislation that would allow absentee ballots to be counted earlier. Again, council operations to have a more of a conversation and add some, some language in there to improve the, the resolution. Okay, next, the next two resolutions would have been by Ms. Farrell, but she's, she's not with us tonight, so I, Mr. Shea, will you do them on behalf of finance?
Sure.
Okay, and it's three eleven twenty-one R. for the section, the tax law, section one eleven, the accelerated foreclosures and resolution for eleven twenty-one, resolution, reappointing Frank Cosgrove to the Board of Assessment Review. Those will be passes. They went through committee and, excuse me, not went through committee, were discussed and agreed to move forward with.
Four eleven is, is Judy, not Kathy?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It, it would have been fair, yeah, it's Judy for, for finance, yeah.
Kelly, I just printed out the active calendar and that three eleven's not on there. Is there any reason or are we overseeing something?
Yeah, there's a gap in. Yeah, I actually, reading this early, I just noticed it myself. It's in the resolutions introduced, but it got, got skipped on the actual calendar. I have to watch the, it is, it's, it is. So that is it for the, the calendar? We have some some commissioner deeds that we have to, we'll have to do and I, I'll just do that for Ms. Farrell to move those and we got a little bit of time.
I have a gentle ask.
Sure, yeah.
So the county has sent in the signature cards for the council members who were reappointed as commissioner of deeds. So if members could stop by, sign their commissioner of deeds cards, I am a notary. I will witness your signatures because we have a thirty-day time limit in which to submit them. So, thank you.
Just want to know, Sonja, how's your leg doing? He's with us.
You know, it's, it's not great, Joe, but what can you do, right? Yeah, I have to get surgery. Scheduling TBD. Thank you for asking. Appreciate it.
Been there.
And so, yeah, just, just thinking about the future meetings, we're, we're still, that January thirteenth meeting with DGS is still in the works. We're waiting to hear back from them. We, we talked about it last meeting.
I spoke to Frank Rielly today and he confirmed for the twenty-seventh, both the caucus and the whole presentation about snow removal and then followed by a DGS committee meeting, Kathy Fahy's legislation regarding sidewalks. Sidewalks, snow removal. So it is confirmed for the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
I want raise a question, I, which I meant to raise earlier today. In caucus, two caucuses ago, we had the school district come in and they asked for us to advocate with the legislature for certain things. Oh, Danielle has an answer. I've been working with Ron Lesko on the letter and I should have a letter out within the next day or so. They went off on break, so they're just returning back today and then there was some, you know, they made a modification to in-person, so. Yeah, it's a time of year complicated by COVID. The challenges, but, yeah. So I am glad to know that that is in the works.
So since we have this extra time, can we talk about that internet? Because internet is prime right now and I don't know if Aluso wanted to say anything, but we sure could use good old internet right about now.
Um, I, I did see earlier that Kathy Fahy, the chair of the planning committee, is looking to have a meeting to discuss the resolution on February third. I think it's a step in the right direction and again, when it comes to digital divide that exists, right, the school district has come out with their own findings that forty percent of families don't have access to the internet. There are some suggestions that were made that, you know, Spectrum is providing hotspots or there are other various companies that are providing hotspot to the residents, but when I speak to families who are utilizing those hotspots, they're saying that it's a bare minimum at best. It's insufficient. The service is, quite frankly, just terrible and, and to put a lack of better words. So I, 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 I still stand consistent that, you know, when the private sector fails to act, government must intervene. And this is a digital divide that I believe that the legislative body for the city of Albany can really put a dent in addressing. So I just want, you know, I want to thank Kathy for, with the committee being for February third and for a discussion.
Question, Bud, wouldn't it be helpful to get an update as to where we are with our spectrum negotiations? Are they gonna be, continue to be our only, you know, cable? Obviously, in, in internet is not part of the franchise agreement, but if they're looking for a French cable franchise with this, wouldn't that give us a little muscle as to expanding internet coverage using spectrum? Because we're, I think, maybe, maybe, maybe Brett would know this, but I think we're at the end of our ten-year contract and it may have expired.
Contracts already expired.
Inspired this.
Expired December thirty-first of last year.
Okay, so, I mean, that would seem to be also an additional part of the conversation.
Yeah, and I agree with you. And it would be good to have somebody at the February third meeting, but I could tell you this, the Albany residents are fed up with spectrum to say that, you know, they are expensive and they provide subpar service. I've not met anyone in the city of Albany that said Spectrum provide, you know, quality, even at bare minimum, a good service. So I will say this, Spectrum has made it very clear. They're just incapable of providing quality internet for the residents of the city of Albany. So, look, I am open to get an update to see where we are as it relates to the contract negotiation with Spectrum. So, but I will tell you this, Spectrum is just not cutting it.
So Kathy, we like need to, like, incorporate somebody.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Chris Spencer's planning to be at this February third meeting, but it probably somebody from court counsel's office, if you want to have that conversation, should be there.
Yeah, Jared's been.
And Jared, yeah.
Conversation.
And, and my understanding is, if Spectrum's not doing the job that they should, we could go to another franchisee for the cable TV, but that's the same fiber optics. I mean, my point is, you know, the internet is technically a little different from franchise we give them, but it's the same company using the same wires. You know, we should have some leverage over them. And, and, and I don't think it's that they can't do it because I know up here I have spectrum and it seems to work fine. Maybe it's that they won't do it to the degree that they should throughout the city.
Thank you, Mr. Holy and then Mr. Ballerin.
Yeah, um, you know, it, it, when you talk about, we're talking about infrastructure, the current spectrum infrastructure charter communications is coax cable and that's what's around. What we all would like to see is the FiOS with the fiber optic, but they're saying they don't want to come here. But an idea I had also was I was gonna try to talk to you at some point, we should try to get in touch with Elon Musk. He has this new Starlink system that they're putting up and what they're advertising it for is for remote areas like out in the country, but we might be able to make an argument with, with somebody like this that, you know, our inner-city people need access and we're not getting it, you know, currently. So, I mean, I'd be glad to talk to you offline and maybe we can do a letter to them. It might amount to nothing, but then again, it could. You know, if we can get somebody like that to jump on board. Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Tom, is that one of them up in the hill towns? Sorry.
Yes, they're talking about bringing it up there. You know, he's right on the cusp of releasing it from what I've been reading. I can get some information and try, I'll send it out to the whole council. I'll get some news articles about it. But it was a way that we can bypass the whole wiring up the city with fire, fiber, or using the spectrum stuff.
Mr. Ballerin.
And I was gonna piggyback on what Tom said. I'm glad, you know, we've got it. That's what we've gotta look at. We gotta look at the creative new ways because right now, the problem is we have no competition in, in the city. And it's not so much the franchise contract, it's the fact that the other biggest vendor Verizon doesn't want to come to the city. And they've said it to us bluntly after we sent them a letter inviting them to, to, to come. So our residents are paying more for internet than residents in Goudalun. And why is that? It's because Goudalun has the opportunity, has the two vendors, so they have to provide more competitive rates. So I think we need to be more creative and I, I, I like the way Tom's thinking. I like the way Councilman Anani's thinking. We need to be more creative and looking at ways to get outside funding to be able to provide these type of resources, you know, and to build this type of infrastructure because we can't do it with what we have. We understand that. But if we're gonna do it, we have to look outside the box and we have to look outside for other resources and funding to be able to provide equitable internet services, which is a necessity. And we've seen that today a lot more than maybe we would have said two years ago. But for everyone who said two years ago, it's not a utility. Today, today, and this pandemic has proved that it is a utility and it's treated as such. But, yeah, I, I look forward to working with my council members on seeing how.
I, I've done some poking around on the internet on this issue. It's, it, there's, it's a many-layered issue and, you know, municipalities across the country are dealing with this. So I'll, I'll forward some of these articles. I think they're really helpful. And then it's important for everyone to know that they're dealing with it on the state level here in New York also. I mean, there's a lot of money that's been designated to address, you know, areas that don't have internet. And so they're gradually rolling that out and it's supposed to address underserved neighborhoods in city, cities as well, like Albany. But a lot of moving parts here and there's a lot of information and I'll, I'll send that to everyone. I sent it to a couple of people, but I'll share it with everyone.
Yeah, I, I think there's a bill on the governor's desk now that relates to the Public Service Commission and study or looking at exactly the issues of.
Is that, is that the Gunther bill? He vetoed it.
Oh, he didn't veto it?
Yes.
Last I checked, it was still, it had just been sent up.
I, I saw that he just vetoed it and that had to do with a one-year study of the issue of giving municipalities the ability to form their own municipal broadband. He said it needed to be taken up in the budget process in his veto statement.
Standard excuse.
So, but it's worth, it's worth looking at and, you know, as to what they're doing at the state level and, and, and what they're doing at municipalities throughout the country. I mean, there's some municipalities that have addressed this. So, but I, I'll share that information with everyone.
Okay, Judy, Mr. Shea, sorry.
Thank you. So you know, as I'm listening to this, I'm very conscious of the immediate need that our families have that none of this will address. So I'm wondering if we, you know, we have businesses chipping in to help buy Chromebooks for students in the Albany City School District. I'm wondering if we can get some sort of program going that provides support so that individual households can get, you know, installation in a three-month, you know, automatic or a five-month automatic subscription to whatever service would be time-woner right for now. You know, in those households where students are doing remote learning, whether that's predominantly or partially. So that's something, you know, we're helping businesses. I was thinking last night about the number of kids and there are some of my relatives who are struggling with remote learning and how, you know, I wonder, you know, if essentially we're not only gonna bear the, you know, the social and educational costs, but there's a fiscal cost to the idea of, okay, a lot of these children really shouldn't go on to the next year. So then what does our school district do? We are then keeping students in our school district for another year and financing that education if we see them through to high school graduation, rather than financing that extra year at, I, you know, it's someplace around forty thousand dollars a year per student these days in the Albany City School District. So this is pretty urgent. And I'm, and I'm wondering if there is a way to simply get these families signed up for for cable inside their own homes and get it installed. And, and I gotta say, in some cases, maybe having people, you know, assist people in getting then hooked up once the cable access is there. So I'm wondering if anybody has any thoughts about that. I'm wondering if the programming, the funding that Fay Andrews gets is something that we could use to establish something like that. But this is, this is dire and immediate.
Yeah, it, it is. And, and I agree. I, I think that conversation should probably start with linking up with the school district because, but we know there are a lot of gaps, but I think they've been working at this for a bit, so maybe a conversation needs to be had with them to see where the gaps are and, and move forward that way because we don't want to duplicate effort and, and tap into, you know, try to tap into things that they're, they're doing. So I think we need to connect or. we need to connect or have a meeting with some of those folks to try to figure out, you know, how we we can help.
If I, if I could just um, add in, wh- when are we gonna have the conversation about um, the wiring that, um, I know it's a costly conversation, but it's a much-needed conversation because it excludes us. We just um, purchased the streetlights and they have these smart nodes that we can't take av- advantage of because we don't have the uh, wiring. And the bigger question I was hoping that someone was gonna uh, bring to the table is that when are we gonna start having that conversation so that um, not only for Internet, but when it comes to people um, having a choice for cable um, companies, you know, the um, uh, files experience from what I understand is a totally different experience than any of these other uh, cable companies are um, offering. And and so we get left out of um, consideration. I I believe the, one of the things that may uh, prohibit um, Verizon from wanting to do business with is because because of our um, cables. So I just, um, I know it's costly and everything, but um, some of this stuff is needly and the and the time is calling for it right now. So I would hope that um, we could figure out how how to have that right conversation that can open up the door for, you know, continuous improvements in other directions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for, to your point there, I I think, uh, again, uh, the folks working on the franchise agreement would be uh, best suited, uh, because they're a part of those conversations. And we have a couple of members, uh, Mr. Baller and um, Mr. Conti, you're a part of, and Mr. uh, Anani are part of that that group. So we we could continue these conversations. We're getting into uh, our main meeting time, so we'll we'll uh, resume this uh, discussion at a later time. Uh, Mr. Ellis, President Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Kimbrough. Speaking of Spectrum, I think keeps lighting up. My Internet is unstable. So I don't know. Some of you guys were freezing on me, so I hope I don't freeze during the meeting. Um, but welcome. Happy New Year. Welcome to our January four Common Council meeting of the new year. I'm glad to see uh, uh, New Year come and we're hoping that this is our final year together of this constituted uh, council. Um, and this two twenty twenty-one, um, is going to be uh, challenging uh, for us legislative-wise because we have many important legislations that we will be dealing with on this council coming forward, going forward. And I hope that uh, with this new year, we continue to work together and we communicate more often with each other. Uh, because the legislations that's going to be coming in front of us is going to be very important for us to be uh, communicating constantly, uh, so that we all uh, understand what what we would like to see in the legislations and the the things that are coming forward before us in this near future. So um, with that being said, uh, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all members can unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their names. Mr. Anani.
Present.
Ms. Baller.
Present.
Conti.
Present.
Dochet.
Here.
Behe.
Here.
Barrow. Lynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
He's raising his hand.
Igo. Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson.
Present.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. Now, um, we go to our next, um, put up the flag, um, and then we'll have a moment of silence. Uh, when we put up our flag and let's remember all those, uh, this pandemic we're battling. Uh, and people and families are struggling and it seems to be getting worse. And there's new reports out that the new virus, the other viruses hit close to us in Saratoga, so we want to be mindful of that and mindful of the challenges we face uh, moving forward. So that being said, can the clerk please put up the pledge allegiance flag? Thanks. Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. And to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on with our agenda, we have a public hearing scheduled for today. Curse matters. Can the clerk please read the public hearing?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the closing of Scott Street in the city of Albany, New York.
And we do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing?
We have no one signed up for the public hearing specifically or any comments to be shared with the council tonight regarding this piece of legislation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, since we have no one signed up for the public hearing, I don't know if there's a timeframe, but uh, this public hearing is deemed closed. Continuing on with our agenda, moving on to uh, local laws, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Meeting minutes, Mr. President.
I'll prove, thanks. Approval. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offered a meeting minutes for our December twenty-first of twenty twenty meeting uh, for approval.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now, moving on to uh, local laws, uh, Mr. Kimbrough, I mean, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed, um, local law, I and act for it to be read and passed.
We do have, but we do have other members that are here for public, the public comment itself. They didn't want to speak specific to the public hearing.
Gotcha. Thank you. Didn't see anybody. Okay, so we'll, sorry about that. We'll hold off. So we have, how many people we have?
We have three people that are in our uh, waiting queue to speak. We have Adam Alexic first, which I will let in.
He's rejoining.
Mr. Lexus, this is Cory Ellis. How are you doing?
Uh, hello.
Thank you for joining us. I'd just like to state for the record, you have to state your name and address. Address for the record, you have five minutes to speak on any issue you choose to speak on. Uh, within, after four minutes, I will let you know you have a minute left. At this time, uh, council members cannot respond to your public comments or statements. And they can't answer any questions at this time. If they choose to do so, they will do so at a later time uh, in the uh, agenda. So with that being said, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, my name is Adam Alexic. I'm here to speak regarding Resolution one eleven twenty-one R. Um, last fall, I spent a semester living with some friends in Milwaukee. Apart from their accents and excellent cheese, one thing really struck me about the city. Their flag is everywhere. Every other house flies one from their stoop. People wear clothing with its design and little flag souvenirs are sold at local businesses. People have pride in their flag and that's because it's really well-designed and accurately represents the city. The same is true in every other city with a good flag, from Amsterdam to Denver to Washington DC. But we don't have that here. I love Albany and I want to love its flag too, but our current flag has several issues. First, it's based on the Prince's flag of the Netherlands, which was used by the Dutch Nazi Party in the nineteen thirties, became the basis for the South African apartheid flag and has since been repurposed by white supremacists like Charleston shooter Dylan Roof to serve as a hate symbol. Second, it's a design atrocity, violating four out of five rules set forth by the North American Vexilological Association, the leading organization for flag experts. This has stifled potential unity and civic pride. Rather than being something for everyone to proudly display, our flag is an eyesore relegated to Just City Hall. Transitioning away from a flag is an inexpensive, straightforward process that has already been done by many other cities and states. By giving us a symbol that represents all of us, you will engender not only increased community spirit, but an economic boost from the merchandising, branding, and increased small business purchases that have been shown to result from other flag changes. I commend Councilmember Anani for bringing this to your attention. And I urge you all to vote for Resolution one eleven twenty-one R to send a message to our citizens and Mayor Sheehan that you support a move toward good inclusive flag design for our city. Ideally, there can still be a commission to look into this, uh, so we can see more concrete change, but this is an excellent start. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Uh, we also have Gene Solen here who would, has joined us to speak.
Hello, Ms. Solen. Hello, Ms. Solen. You were unmuted and now you're not. So can you try again, please? Wow, she's off. Okay, can, uh, clerk, can you call the next speaker? Cause Solen seems to be gone now. Oh, there she is. Hold up. She's muted again.
So we could.
We'll come back. We'll come back to her.
So he's a male.
I also have Adam, I'm sorry, Stephen Kavanaugh signed up to speak.
There's Stephen. Hello, Mr. Kavanaugh. Some reason everybody's unmuting themselves. Okay, there you go. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Hello.
Yes.
Can you see me? Hi.
Yes, sir. We can see you. We can hear you, which is more important.
Oh, that's good.
Just give us your name, address, uh, for the record, and you have five minutes to speak on any subject you wish to speak upon.
Okay, um, my name is Stephen Kavanaugh. I live at a one oh three Columbia Street apartment two. I've probably spoken to Joyce Love already about this and uh, because of her advice, that's why I'm here, because she told me to um, speak to Assemblyman John McCormick's office. And the lady in his office said, you have to go in front of Common Council and change a law. Uh, because I live at one oh three Columbia Street, I cannot get a uh, a residential parking sticker for my car. I've had um, a waiver form, I have meters in front of my apartment. I've had a waiver form for four years. Um, that took care of my, my meters because it's my doctor. I'm on disability and my doctor would sign the form and it would take care of the meters. But this year, um, he wouldn't sign it for some reason. And uh, so I went to City Hall and the lady says, your address, she's, uh, she went to and looked in her notebook and she says, it's not there. And I said, what? And she says, your address. And then she told me to get in touch with Joyce Love and she told me to get in touch with uh, John McCormick. I go in touch with Kathy Sheehan's office and they said, you're better off talking to your doctor than getting in front of the common council. Like to talk to my doctor to sign the form. You know, I've been doing this for two weeks now and now I have to put money in the meter because my form ran out the first of the year. And uh, I only have two dollars right now to my name. And I have to put money in the meter tomorrow and and I have to be like, I'll be like three hours early to an AA meeting because I don't want to get a ticket and I don't want to get a boot on my car. I mean, I I am, I'm in some kind of Twilight Zone or something because I live across the street from the Albany County Courthouse. I'm on the right-hand of this, right-hand side of Columbia Street. And people on the left, like the policemen, lawyers, they park on the left and no trouble at all. And they walk right into, right into the courthouse. But if I park outside, I'll get a ticket if I don't do with the meter. And it's, I can't, I talked to the parking authority. I talked to a lot of people and I ended up here. And the last thing was, John McCormick's office said, go in front of Common Council and you have to change a law. That's what they said. So here I am, one oh three Columbia Street, right across the street from City Hall, I mean, the courthouse. I can't get a parking sticker, a parking permit for some reason. And I'm sorry, that's it. I'm sorry, I'm emotional, but I I don't have any money either. And the waiver form took care of the meters. And uh, I've been here fifteen years in this apartment. And I've had a license, I stopped drinking six years ago and I got my license right back. And and uh, the doctor signed that form every year, but this one. And now I I'm I'm, I don't, I'm just, this is where the people told me to go. Here I am. That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you, sir. And um, Adam, a clerk, we do have.
Dean Solen Beck in unmuted, looks like able to speak. Mr. Solen.
They're unmuted. Hello?
Dean Solen. If Gene Solen wishes to submit uh, his comments at a later date, I'd be more than happy to forward them to the entire uh, council body if he's unable to get his audio and and provide them live.
Thank you. Cause they are, I can see they're unmuted, but you can't hear anything, so. Is there another person signed up for public com- comment period?
That's all that we have.
We have no written public comments?
I didn't receive any, no.
Okay. Well, Mr. Solen, later on in the council meeting, in the agenda, if we, you know, by chance we hear him or her, we'll let them speak on a later portion of the council meeting if that's possible, but they're gone now. Okay, thank you. Um, now we um, we'll have a public comment period closed for today. And we'll be moving on to uh, local laws. Um, now, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I I noticed local law, I and act for it to be read and passed.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending Article one of Part one of Chapter forty-two of Part one of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the use of police video cameras.
Discussion on the local law?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you again. I I guess we, you know, each and every time we turn on our um, TV and we watch the news, we see uh, you know, examples of how valuable cameras, uh, camera use is um, when it's worn by police. And I just think that, and I hope, and I um, will advocate for a time when and when everybody is wearing um, a camera that's associated with um, law enforcement. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who supported this and, you know, the time is now for um, this type of. and, you know, the time is now for this type of resolution. So thank you again.
Further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all members can unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their name. Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes, and co-sponsor.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes, and I believe I'm already a co-sponsor.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
14 in the affirmative.
Local law passes. Mr. Kimbra?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of local laws are held.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbra. Continuing on our agenda, we go into introductions of ordinances. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the introduction of ordinance 1.11.21.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 359 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to establishing zone boundaries and streets designated as permit-only within such zones.
Mr. Kimbra?
Yes, Mr. President, this will just be sitting for the agent period.
Thank you so much. And the rest of the ordinance, Mr. Kimbra?
They are held, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbra. Continuing on, can you continue on resolutions introduced? Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 1.1121R, and that's for his introduction.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council to authorize a commission to study changes to the flag of the City of Albany. That title was modified. Forgive me, I read the wrong title. It should be read, for the record, as Resolution of the Common Council to authorize a study?
No.
Changes, authorize a commission to study changes in the flag of the City of Albany. I believe they were making modifications to the title.
Yes, it was sent via email, hold on.
Yeah, I did make a corrected version, which I sent to Michelle, and I think she forwarded on back during caucus or during the beginning part of the meeting.
I do have the updated title. I believe it should be introduced as Resolution of the Common Council encouraging a community conversation on changes to the flag of the City of Albany.
Correct.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the members and anyone listening. I don't get into, but I just, I'm a little, okay. Sorry, reports of standing committees I skipped over as well, I'm so sorry. So if anyone would have reported standing committees before we go on with introduction of resolutions? Mr. O'Brien?
The General Services Committee will be meeting January 27th after the caucus to consider Resolution 6.21.20R regarding promoting equity and pedestrian safety and mobility involving snow and ice removal from city sidewalks, street crossings, and bus stops. And also during the caucus, there's going to be a discussion on snow emergencies, snow removal during big storms. That's part of the caucus itself, but the resolution will be entertained in the meeting following the caucus.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I see Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Upcoming meetings for the Planning, Economic Development, and Land Use Committee are this Wednesday, January 7th, to discuss local law M of 2020. This concerns the Historic Resources Commission, emergency demolition and stabilization procedures, and ordinance 219220, which also concern emergency building actions in historic districts. The next Planning, Economic Development, and Land Use Committee is January 11, and that's to discuss ordinance 209220, and that has to do with the zone change, proposed zone change concerning 1057 and 1061 Washington Avenue. And then we also have a meeting coming up on Tuesday, January 19, and that's ordinance 4612220, and that's to discuss technical amendments to the USDA. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more standing committees? Seeing none, okay. And we continue on with introductions of resolutions. Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 2.11.21R, and ask for his introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to enact legislation that would allow absentee ballots to be counted earlier.
Mr. Kimbra?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a referral to council operations, along with 11121R also both.
Thank you. Continuing on resolutions introduced, since the Finance Chair is not here, Ms. Duchesne?
For some reason, it doesn't want to unmute. All right, got it. So I notice Resolution 3.11.21R for introduction and passage, and ask for a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution authorizing the implementation of real property tax law Section 1111A in the City of Albany to provide for and facilitate accelerated tax foreclosure proceedings involving vacant and abandoned residential properties.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Valerie?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
I'm sorry, yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
14 in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on resolutions introduced, Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 4.11.21R for introduction and ask for its passage in a roll call vote thereon.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council reappointing Francis A. Cosgrove as a member of the Board of Assessment Review.
Any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you. I just want to commend Mr. Cosgrove and thank him for being willing to continue to serve in this capacity. He has been on the board for a while. He has the respect of the fellow board members. My reports from people who have appeared before the board is they always feel like they are being treated respectfully and fairly. And he is very knowledgeable. So we're very lucky to have him serving in this capacity. He's also, I want to say, reliable. It is quite a commitment during the month of May that these board members make in their attendance on a regular basis, and their commitment to essentially a full-time job for that one month is very important. So he did come before the committee and was interviewed, and people were impressed with him. And again, we thank him for his service.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Valerie?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes.
14 in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Kimbra.
The rest of the resolutions on the agenda are held.
You, and we have, I think we have some Commissioner of Deeds. Mr. Kimbra?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a, I offer a list of names for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds for a term ending December 31 of 2022, and waive the reading of names.
Is there second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous? Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to briefly touch on Mr. Kavanaugh's comments. Made a public comment earlier regarding his parking situation. And I think we've had this discussion before, but the problem with where he resides on Columbia Street, Columbia Street is zoned as commercial property. It's Columbia is, you know, down near the courthouse, just near City Hall. But it's zoned commercial. And under state law that authorizes the establishment of permit parking systems, and this is the same that applies to all of the permit parking systems in the state, all 17 or 18 of them. We are prohibited from designating permit parking spaces on streets that are zoned commercial. So that's the main problem with where he is and why it really can't easily be addressed by amending the permit parking system. In theory, he is about midway between two different zones, both of which are over a mile, maybe two miles away from where he lives. And if you were to somehow extend the permit boundaries to include where he is, which would take in a lot of other areas, but would not, again, we would not be allowed to designate any of the spots on that area as permit parking, it would be a permit that would allow him, in theory, to park in a permit zone that might be two miles away. So that's the problem in, you know, the way the state law is set up and what we're allowed to do and can't do, and where the zones are. There might, I don't know if there's another way of dealing with his situation, or if the city has some mechanism of implementing, you know, a system where you have a person with a disability that relates to some type of ability to talk, to park it and metered space, but have the meter fee waived. And it sounds like when you have the doctor's permit or waiver, that is what the situation was. And I don't know if there's some other way of dealing with it, but just wanted to note in terms of the issue with the permit system is that the state law prohibits us from designating any spaces on Columbia as permit-only, and that would require a change in state law. And as I said, the current zones that, where he is, he's between two different zones. And they're both, I think they're both about two miles away from where his address is. So it's a real issue, not just for him as an individual, but a lot of, I think there are a lot of addresses downtown where you have all of, a lot of developments going on and rehab. And some of these new apartment complexes have arrangements with the Parking Authority to get discounted spaces in parking garages. But those are the ones further downtown. Columbia is a particular issue where there are a lot of apartments along Columbia in buildings that I think maybe were once offices, but there are a lot of apartments there, and that street's been metered, and there's no real, you know, location that I see, and I, you know, where people can park, residents can park in terms of their options. And I've, you know, heard this from other people as well who live in that area or on Pine or in that general area. And it is a bigger problem that, you know, we should try to find a way to address. But, you know, I understand Mr. Kavanaugh's particular issue, but it is a bigger problem for some of those residents downtown in that area because of the commercial zoning and the proliferation of meters. But I just wanted to explain that the problem with the permit system.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. That sounds like why somebody told him to contact Assemblymember because it's a state law issue, not a city law issue. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to share the comments that were made by Adam during public comment. And I just want to say, as relates to the flag, there's a growing movement, particularly individuals in his age group, who are advocating for the City of Albany to revisit the flag. And, you know, very too often, we hear from all walks of life coming to public comment, and I just want to say that this is an Albany high graduate, currently attending Harvard, raised in the City of Albany. And just, it's refreshing to see young people participate in during public comments. So I just want to commend Adam for coming to public comment to stay his support for the discussion of revisiting the flag. I think it's refreshing as one of the youngest council members to see young people coming in front of this body, sharing their thoughts and feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anani.
I believe Councilwoman Love has her hand raised, Mr. President.
Ms. Love?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to comment on Richard Conti's statement. Richard and I have spoken before about the parking on Columbia Street. But since I've been on the council, I get at least 10 to 15 phone calls a week on the parking situation. I had attorney to call me to help his son out. His tickets was more than his rent. And the best thing I could do was advise him to try to find another apartment because there was nothing I could do. But I remember Richard saying, maybe a couple of years ago, "It's a state issue." And that's when I referred, referred him to John McDonald. He didn't say the name right, but I know who he was talking about. But again, I had the phone calls- But again, I handle phone calls, at least ten to fifteen phone calls a week about parking around the court, around the courthouse.
Yeah. Thank you, Miss Love. I thought I saw Valerie's hand up. Do I see Mr. Valerie's hand up? Yes, Mr. Bow.
Can you hear me now? Uh, thank you, uh, President Ellis. Just to piggyback on the conversation regarding residential parking, uh, it is a state and, and local issue. It's an issue that I, I, I've been speaking on for quite some time on. And I know that we had some movement on this issue last year. And I, I, I think maybe it's a good time uh, to try to get the group together again. To meet with our state um, elected officials to discuss. Oh, you know, the progress that we spoke about last, last year and we would have had some progress on it last year if we didn't go. Uh, into uh, the pandemic which forced a um, a, a, a basic continuation of the same system. So I uh, I think now it's a good time to bring that group back together uh, for us to take a look at how we can move. Move, and it may not address this one specific uh, individual's issues, but maybe we can add that to the plate of all the other issues that we were looking to. Try to get addressed to see um, how we can make the best accommodations for all of our residents. So I, I appreciate that comment uh, and uh, you know, I, I want to make sure the record shows we have been working on this issue. Uh, and it is, it is time consuming because of uh, you know, you have to get state uh, approval. Uh, to be able to expand uh, your residential parking, um, but I think it's time to get that, that group back together.
Mr. Bow. Mr. Conti?
Uh, thanks. I actually, and I think uh, that we really need to begin looking at the issue sooner. As far as Mr. Kavanaugh and the other residents in that area that uh, Councilmember Love referenced. That maybe we should try to work with the law department to see if there are some other options that can be immediate uh, resolution. Because I, I, I don't think that it's something that will be resolved uh, through an amendment with the state law, simply because. This is a template that applies to all of the systems across the state, all seventeen of them. And so I, I just would guess that they're not going to want to make a change like that. But I think it's, it's a more immediate issue uh, that I'm, I'm just wondering if there is a way to begin to deal with it. And it might be helpful to begin to have that conversation, maybe small group with the law department. And explore uh, if there are legal options that we can pursue.
Question, could the parking authority grant them a discounted rate? A green discounted rate?
Yeah.
Big garage?
Yep, uh, the only problem is that where, where the, mostly complaints are on Columbia or Pine or in that area. I don't believe that they're really near um, the Parking Authority garage. The Parking Authority, as I understand it, does have arrangements with some of the developments, the buildings down, further downtown in the downtown business district. Which are near garages uh, where they can, I think they might do uh, like a resident rate that's a long-term, like, you know, month or something lease. But I think the problem with some of these other places are that they're not, they're just not near a public facility.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Kimbro?
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All of the favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Everybody stay healthy.